Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is February 11th, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Please bow your heads for a brief invocation. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. May wisdom guide our decisions, fairness shape our discussions, and compassion lead our actions. Grant us the courage to face challenges, the patience to seek solutions, and the vision to build a brighter future. May this meeting reflect our commitment to collaboration, respect, and service. Next, I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Soprani. Mike, thank you for your assistance. Vice Mayor Fisher has an excused absence this evening, and I would ask Mr. Sullivan to open the meeting with the motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, Your Honor, I have reviewed the minutes from the council meeting and workshop minutes from January 28th, 2025. I find them in order, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, then let's call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have a special presentation, however. You may have noticed that we seem to have a lot of people in uniform here with us tonight, and that's because we're going to do a promotional ceremony. Chief Protsman, would you like to come down and offer it?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, it's truly an honor to be here tonight as we celebrate the promotion of two outstanding officers. As you will hear, both officers bring a wealth of law enforcement experience to the Kettering Police Department, and they exemplify the core values embedded in our mission statement, which reads, "As a committed partner with the community, the Kettering Police Department strives to uphold the honor of Ohio's finest by providing the highest quality of service with ethics, courage, and excellence." It's with great pride that I introduce both of these officers to you. First up is Officer David Warren.
Dave, come on, please.
Dave is being promoted to lieutenant this evening. I had the privilege of working close with Dave because he was our internal affairs sergeant before getting promoted. His office was right next to mine, and when we were talking about this promotional ceremony, he asked me if he could just write his summary up and if I would not look at it until I read in front of you tonight.[234.62][234.62](Laughter). As you can probably see, the look of the people's faces behind you, that know Dave Warren, they think that that's probably a terrible idea, that somebody get up in public and do something like that. But I trust you, and I'm going to do it. It's kind of short. So, please, I'm sorry, you know what? Before I do that, I want to introduce the guests that are here with Dave tonight, if I may. So, his wife Jennifer is here, his daughter Reese, his son Joey, and his father-in-law and mother-in-law Joe and Terry Baldassari are here. Lynn Mitty, his aunt, is here as well. So with that, Dave's statement. "Please let Jen know how much I love her."[291.13][291.13](Laughter). Very good, very nice.[295.58][295.58](Laughter). And I understand that this new position means I'll be away from home more in the coming year. That's true, a lot of commitment on your part. But I promise to balance things out, and I'm making a commitment to her. All right? "I will not play a single round of golf throughout 2025."[322.12][322.12](Laughter). I mean, that's what you under me, it's a small sacrifice, but it's one I'm willing to make. I'm very proud of you. I know how much golf means to you. Dave Warren holds a bachelor's degree in sociology/criminology from Morehead State University. He served with the Tipp City Police Department before being hired by Kettering in December of 2003 as a patrol officer. Over the years, Dave has taken on a variety of roles, including evidence technician, field training officer, hostage negotiator, and a vice detective. In August 2020, he was promoted to sergeant, where he supervised the afternoon watch. He was later assigned to the professional standards, where he worked to ensure the department's integrity. Throughout his hard work, through his hard work, leadership, and dedication, Lieutenant Warren continues to make a significant impact on the Kettering Police Department and the community it serves. Congratulations, Dave.[399.12][399.12](Applause).
Next, Doug Stewart. Doug, come on up.
Doug is being promoted to sergeant. Doug, you didn't give me anything to read, but I'll make something up if you were like for it.[416.71][416.71](Laughter). Doug is here tonight with his wife Summer. Doug holds a bachelor's degree in urban affairs administration from Wright State University. He served with the Ohio National Guard's Combat Engineering Battalion, and before being hired by Kettering, he served as a police officer in both Germantown and Tipp City. In December of 1996, he joined KPD. Doug quickly became known for his expertise, versatility, and leadership qualities. Throughout his tenure, he has taken on a wide range of roles, including evidence technician, field training officer, hostage negotiator, and a member of the SWAT team, where he also served as a sniper. Doug's experience extends to being a certified child forensic interviewer and working in various specialty areas, including domestic violence, juvenile crimes, financial crimes, and collaborating with Homeland Security. He is also an active member of national law enforcement organizations, including the National Tactical Officers Association and the National Association of Field Training Officers. Sergeant Stewart's experience, leadership, and commitment have made him an invaluable asset to the Kettering Police Department. Doug, congratulations.[509.24][509.24](Applause).
I'm going to ask Jen and Summer to come up, please, to pin on the badges.
(Inaudible)
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 I've come to several of these promotional ceremonies, and one of the first things I've noticed is it's always kind of difficult because you have your back to your guests and friends. But I would like to address first, Mayor, members of council, directors and department heads that are here, Mr. Greason as well, Chief Robbins. Thank you, guys, for all being here. This is important to all of us. Doug and I started working together in the late '90s, as you heard, in Tipp City. I was a records clerk, going through college, and he came on as a patrol officer. We've been together for a long time, and this next step that we're getting ready to take together, we're looking forward to. We've already had some long conversations, so while the officers seem to get younger, the way that we do policing doesn't change. The citizens are first, that's who's important to us, and it's important that we remember that and make sure that we're giving them the service that they need. Thank you, my family, for being here, my wife, my kids, they're a big part of this. I'm not skipping golf.[623.04][623.04](Laughter). As well done.
We somehow knew that.
She knows that's pretty important to me, so that's the savory side of it. Thank you, guys, all of you, for your support, my in-laws, my parents that aren't with us tonight, but they've called and congratulated. It's an honor, and I look forward to this challenge. Thank you, guys, for having me.
Thank you.[646.82][646.82](Applause).
Mayor, thank you very much. Very proud of these two individuals, and I'm proud with everybody at the Kettering Police Department. As you always know, and as I always tell you, that they're a special group of individuals who serve the city very well, so thank you for allowing us to discuss tonight.
And thank you, because you bring us some of our favorite people, and congratulations to the two new officers.
Thank you.
And our promoted officers.
We are now going to go down and take some pictures in the basement, and we're going to be very quiet so we don't interrupt your meeting.
Okay.
We're going to do better than the fire department did last night.
Are you going to have cake?[689.43][689.43](Laughter). Yeah, they were pretty rowdy. Thank you, all of you. Thanks for coming.
(Inaudible)
Okay, move along with the meeting here, because I know those policemen are going to be nice and quiet. At this point in the agenda is the opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to comment on any of the legislation that is before us this evening. Anyone wishing to speak should speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speaker must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wish to speak this evening? Charlie?
My conference. I have a broader matter. I have a...
They're speaking loudly, unfortunately, and I'm having trouble hearing you. You brought our matter, then you have an opportunity later in the meeting.
Later on.
Yeah. Okay. We will start now with ordinances in second reading, and we'll start with Mr. Sullivan.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance in second reading to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering regarding traffic signs on Fairmont Avenue. This is requested by the engineering department, and I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved in second. Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're requesting a prior ordinance that was passed many years ago regarding no parking on Fairmont Avenue, south of Dorothy Lane, to be rescinded and replaced with a new ordinance that would extend the no parking restrictions further south. Recently, we've received concerns and complaints from school bus drivers and other emergency response vehicles about difficulty driving. This section of, first block of Fairmont Avenue, south of Dorothy, up to Parkdale Street, is narrow in this section, it's hard for those types of vehicles to navigate, given the narrow width of the road, and so we're requesting the no parking to be extended further south to Parkdale Street. You happy to answer any questions?
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Seen none, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering regarding Swigert Road. This is being requested by the engineering department, and there is no associated cost.
Okay, Mr. Bergstreser. Yes.
It's been moved to approval.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, now, Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a new restriction on Swigert Road. If you're familiar with Swigert Road, there's a fairly significant curve along there heading out towards Green County from Wilmington Pike. We're requesting no parking to be on the outside of the curve or the north side of the curve due to the sharpness of the curve, and also we've had recently some vehicles parking that area and making driving more difficult. So for safety reasons, we'd like to request that no parking be added to the north side of Swigert in this area. You happy to answer any questions?
Okay, any questions? Seen none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Titan Armor Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of ballistic vests and helmets for the fire department. Estimated cost is $31,000, and as requested by the fire department, I do move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members of council. This is for the purchase of ballistic vests and helmets that will be utilized by the Kettering Fire Department members during any calls that they receive that may have a threat of violence. The equipment will be assigned to each apparatus so that all on-duty crews will have access to protective equipment. Be glad to have the chief answer any questions that you may have.
Call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution to adopt the 2024 Montgomery County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. There is no associated cost. This is being requested by the fire department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. Montgomery County coordinates the development of the natural hazard mitigation plan once every five years. So the city council last adopted this in 2019, and the county went through a process to update it recently. We participate in this multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation planning process in order to be eligible for federal mitigation funds and FEMA reimbursement when there's a natural disaster, as well as it's a good practice to work on preparing for a natural disaster. Each jurisdiction must adopt the 2024 Montgomery County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan to be eligible for the funds I just discussed, and we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seen none, call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the Board of Education of the Kettering School District for school resource officers. This is requested by the police department, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor, this is our regular agreement that we have with the Board of Education to support Kettering City schools through school resource officers. And Chief, I don't know if you would want to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I think everybody in this room knows how important these positions are for us and across the country, so we very much appreciate the partnership with the schools. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions, either for the chief or Mr. Greason? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase bullet-resistant vests for the police department. The estimated cost is $50,768.56. The amount budgeted is $62,350, and this is requested by the police department. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor, the police department is requesting the purchase of 38 bullet-resistant vests and 14 external uniform shirt carriers from Government Holdings Corp. This purchase is to replace vests that are due to expire, that don't last forever, and the cost of the purchase is contained within the police department's approved 2025 budget. I'd invite the chief to anything he might like to.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, another important piece of equipment for the officers, something they very much need, and it is a replacement that we go through about every five years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for either? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the maintenance removal and replacement of trees on city-owned properties. This is being requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts. Both the estimated cost and the amount budgeted is $75,000, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a request for the replacement of trees throughout our parks, various city-owned lots, and roadway median locations. It will also fund the purchasing and planting of our citizen tree program. You happy to answer any questions?
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation from Tom's Mulch. The amount is $6,200 and is requested by Parks and Recreation Department. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a project that is in relation to the Lathrum Garden Project at Indian River Park, which is directly related to the donation that we received from the Lathrum family for new renovations to the Lathrum Senior Center. Tom's Mulch, who's the contractor for the project, has donated the supplies and services to install a putting green as part of the new Lathrum Garden Project, which will be opening up here this spring as the weather improves. The green is valued at $6,200, and we do need a resolution to accept the donation. You happy to answer any questions?
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. I'd like to just add that send a kudos to Tom's Mulch for this contribution. That was kind of a nice gift for the city. Okay.
I have a resolution authorizing the purchase of Microsoft Windows Server licenses through the State of Ohio Volume Licensing Program. The estimated cost and amount budgeted are both $53,000. This is requested by Administrative Systems, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a rather technical request tonight as it relates to our Administrative Systems Department and their ability to successfully maintain the city's data center infrastructure. So think of our server infrastructure that feeds all of our, not only office computers, but all of our public safety computers as well. So we have a piece of software that we've been using for years called VMware, which allows for virtualization of various computers through our server network. The cost for this VMware program has gone up very significantly, so we've had to research other products that would give us a similar level of service. We have settled on a Microsoft product called Hyper-V, a virtualization product. So the resolution before you tonight would allow us to purchase the licenses through the State of Ohio Volume Purchasing Program for this Hyper-V product through Microsoft. I am not a computer scientist; that is the level of my understanding of this. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, challenges, knowledge? Okay, let's call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025. The estimated cost of this is $18,200 and requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Let's see, that's Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. The first supplemental appropriation relates to streetlight repair. $12,000 is requested to repair damages to a streetlight pole and detector loop at Far Hills and the Stroop Road intersection. There was work being done on a water main break that damaged both the traffic loop and the pavement, as well as a light pole, and the costs of the repairs are $12,000. We expect that we'll get reimbursement for Montgomery County on that. Additionally, we need to appropriate the donation that you just accepted from Tom's Mulch of $6,200 so that those funds can be expended. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, we will now move to ordinances in first reading.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance in first reading to amend Section 152.08 of the codified ordinances regarding the city contract provisions. This is requested by the Law Department. First reading.
Okay. I'm going to call on Ms. Tess. Well, I know you as Maggie.
You got it.
Got it.
Thank you, Your Honor. The goal of this ordinance amendment is to clean up the language that was recently enacted by council, to both align with similar state provisions and to help the Law Department move through contract negotiations more efficiently. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Do we have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
No roll on this one, Mayor.
That's right, first reading.
Yes. Your Honor, I have another ordinance at first reading to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering regarding West David Road. This is being requested by the engineering department.
Okay, Mr. Bergstreser.
Apologize, Your Honor, my computer resides in dire. So, yes, this is a ordinance in first reading tonight to amend the traffic control map and traffic control file as we did earlier in the agenda. This is for no parking on the west end of West David Road. There's a cul-de-sac on this section of David Road that dead-ends into NCR Country Club. We've been approached by the residents in that area concerned about the parking of contracted vehicles and other vehicles that probably shouldn't be in that area. Therefore, we are requesting the traffic control to be for no parking in this area. Again, it's ordinance first reading. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seen none, call the roll.
First reading.
First reading again, that still hasn't changed. Okay. We will now move on to certifications and petitions. Mrs. Hayslip, do we have any this evening?
Your Honor, we do have one certification. Planning Commission is recommending approval of PC 25-002 zoning text amendment. A public hearing regarding this request will be held at the February 25th, 2025 city council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Move now to managers' report and community update. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. It's great to highlight our blood pressure clinic dates. If you're interested in participating, they're at the Dayton Metro Library Kettering Moraine Branch there on Far Hills, and the February dates and March dates are on the screen. Feel free to call the city if you have any questions about it. Additionally, we want to make sure that you know that the administrative offices of the city will be closed on President's Day, Monday, February 17th, and returning, obviously, on Tuesday. Our boards and commissions are very important, and committees are very important to the operating of our city. We value public input and the role of our citizens in decision-making, and we want to make people aware that the Board of Zoning Appeals is seeking two volunteer members. The deadlines for those applications is February 18. If you're interested in zoning, this may be a good opportunity for you. We are also honoring Black History Month, and our Board of Community Relations is doing great work calling all Kettering-area students to enter the 2025 Black History Month audio or video essay contest. The eligibility for that, as well as the submission deadline are on the screen. I believe the submission deadline is Wednesday, February 19. Great program to honor Black history and engage our students in this month, this important Likewise, we place a priority on volunteerism in Kettering, and if you know an outstanding volunteer, nominations for the 42nd year of the Mayor's Award are being accepted until Sunday, March 9, and more information can be found on our website, or you can call our volunteer administrator, Lindsay Curry, and she'll have all the information for you. We have a successful micro-enterprise assistance program that is assisting small businesses, not only providing educational opportunities, but if you go through the coursework, you can learn details and information about micro-enterprise forgivable loans. The information about this great opportunity to learn more about how to operate a small business in Kettering is on the screen, and the eligibility requirements for the loan program you can find by contacting Angela Rahm in our Community Development Division. We encourage small businesses to take a look at our great micro-enterprise program. That's all I have, Your Honor. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to that opportunity in our agenda where Charlene can come speak, as well as anybody else. This is an opportunity for audience participation, speaking on a subject that is not on tonight's legislative agenda. Please provide your name, and then we know it.
Charlene Bayless.
Okay, and your address?
2422 Patterson Boulevard, Kettering 4540.
You can tell she's a pro at this.
Where are all the citizens? This is a Kettering City Council meeting, and the City of Kettering has always had vibrant voices and participation. What's happened?
I ask that question a lot. I love to see this audience full and packed. I guess we got a lot of competition with TV these days. They can turn in and get the most immediate news.
What I have to say is heavy, and citizen, and a voice for citizens also.
Do remember, we are being filmed.
Yes.
And so there are people out there watching.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah.
All right, that's good. That's right, I forgot about that.
Right.
Because I've had several people speak to me about watching the city council meeting. That is good to know. And this, from the week magazine as a lead-in. Did voters choose Donald Trump because they hoped he would cut spending to Medicaid, life-saving cancer research had started, Meals on Wheels? That he would send ICE into schools to terrify immigrant children and citizen children alike? That he would throw into chaos every state and local agency and charity across America that gets federal funding? Of course not. All of these actions are straight from the 900-page Heritage Foundation policy tome known as Project 2025, a plan to effectively destroy most of the federal government. Ahead of the election, Trump swore up and down that he had nothing to do with the document, didn't know who wrote it, and didn't agree with its radical contents. Once he won, he appointed many of its authors and contributors to agency and even cabinet posts. Now it's his entire governing agenda. Fooled you, America. My family, immigrants from Germany and Scandinavia, fought and lost life in World War II, fighting against Adolf Hitler's Nazis in tyranny. My mother wrote weekly letters that I now know reached the servicemen through the work of the Women of Army Unit 6888. Death Camp furnaces had mass cremations by the Nazis. Dachau, near Munich, Germany, started in 1933 as a boys' camp. Auschwitz-Birken in Nazi-occupied Poland was a forty-camps complex. Concentration, work, extermination. Bergen-Balsam in northern Germany's Lower Saxony region was first a POW camp, then a concentration camp. Saturday on Shance Avenue, two federal blue lights vehicles blocked the street and blocked I was late for an appointment, and I couldn't stop. George Bayless, as he passed, said, "I am embarrassed to be an old white man in the United States of America in the 21st century. May the citizens of Kettering, Ohio not be the townspeople who could smell the Jewish bodies burning and did nothing. God help us."
Thank you, Charlene. Does anyone else who wished to speak tonight? Okay, we'll now move on to council reports. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to start?
Yes, I would like to start. I'm a teacher at Fairmont High School. I know, I knew of your husband, so, a big name in Kettering. Thanks for coming in tonight. I wanted to start about, I wanted to share about a few things I attended this weekend. At the Kettering Rec Center was the Sweetheart Dance, daddy-daughter dance, kind of. I took my three daughters. I and some other Fairmont math teachers, we do it every year. I'm going to try not to butcher this, but Shenna Manasakis, she's the staff member who runs it every year, does a great job. My kids remembered like every detail from years past, and they were so excited for it again, and they have something for all types of kids. My oldest daughter was sitting doing crafts in the main room. We were all dancing at times, too. My youngest daughter will dance like crazy, but then needs to cool down, so there's like a room, the library in the Latham Center, that she could go sit and have a quiet minute. And then my youngest daughter, they had, you could shoot baskets and like throw baseballs and things in the other room, and that was like her all night. So it was kind of cool that my three kids were, they're wanting different rooms, but the rec center could accommodate. So Shenna did a phenomenal job with that event. We also had the Fairmont Athletic Hall of Fame Ceremony this weekend, and I wanted to thank the mayor for being there Friday night to help introduce our athletes. On Saturday, the ceremony itself, one of our athletes flew in from London, which is incredible. We've had athletes come in from, or former athletes come in from out of state and things like that, but I think London is the furthest anyone has ever traveled. That was Megan Kelsey. But every one of the inductees, in their speech, talked about, obviously, being a great athlete, you have to have some talents that I didn't have, but you have to have some physical talents. But they talked about the support that you need as well. All of them talked about their families. All of them also talked about growing up in Kettering, Ohio, and how lucky they felt to go to Fairmont, to go to Kettering City Schools, to grow up, you know, be able to use our parks. Both Chelsea Welch and Natalie Uy, they played rec basketball together at the rec center for years. So it was like amazing, all the things they talked about, and each one of them, how much they loved the city. So I know we talk about that all the time, is as a school district, we are shaping these young minds and these young kids to be successful adults, but the role that the city plays in that, I think sometimes maybe we don't appreciate, because every one of them said it. So that was great. I just wanted to share that. It was a good, it was a good Kettering weekend. That's it for me.
Thank you, Shanna.
I had the pleasure of continuing to serve on Partners for Healthy Youth today, and we're setting our agenda for the year. Primarily Partners for Healthy Youth has worked on food and social and emotional health for kids in our community in partnership with the schools. Unrelated to Partners for Healthy Youth, but just something I wanted to mention regarding emotional health with our students that's done here in Kettering is the Hope Squad. My daughter got to serve on it at Van Buren, and they had a fundraiser recently and came to mind that there are peer-to-peer suicide prevention programs in the schools that works to reduce suicide through public awareness and education. And because of that, 95% of the kids in the high school report knowing how to and where to get help from their peers. And it's a group of students that are nominated by their peers and educated by teachers and professionals, and how to communicate where to get help and reduce stigma in the schools. And just wanted to mention that, as well as another thing in our community with the city that bears mentioning a couple times a year that I love, and the city does a great job on, is the housing assistance programs that are available to us here. And it has been mentioned before, like I said, but they're critical, they can help critical home improvements with students or people who live in Kettering, and safety upgrades and healthy, improve healthy living environments. So the three programs I'm thinking of is Lead Safe Ohio Grant Program that helps to mitigate lead in homes that's available through the city, and priority is given to houses with children under six. The air quality improvement grant programs that helps homeowners upgrade their HVAC system to create healthier air quality that can impact resident health. And the housing rehabilitation program that helps with low interest and deferred loans to help income-eligible homemakers to make necessary repairs and improvements. And of course, most of these are available to households earning up to 80% of the city's median income. And then lastly, just wanted to say happy Valentine's to my Valentine for happy, for Valentine's Day this Friday, my husband, Ryan.
Thank you.
Nothing to report on in my committees, but I'll make a public service announcement. Again, you have two days of shopping and restaurant reservation plans for Valentine's Day on Friday.
So just a couple quick things. The Leadership Academy meets Thursday, and we're very excited. It's service, it's our service day. We get to go, we hear about all the wonderful nonprofits in the area, and we especially look forward to lunch with Doorwood. And I know you'll probably be there, and maybe some of the rest of you, I don't know, but if you're going to be, are you going to be there? Oh.
I'm a rotary.
Anyway, we're excited to see our friends at Doorwood, so we're looking forward to that. After the last meeting, I took a little bit of heat from one or two people suggesting that flowers and candy are bad for Valentine's Day. I stand by that. Flowers die, candy gets eaten.
I second that.
Thank you. But We Care Arts offers art, and that lasts forever, and they are open nine to four on Wilmington Pike, Monday through Friday. They are open 10 to 4, Monday through Friday, or Tuesday through Friday, Town and Country. Go to We Care Arts. It's awesome. Also, I want to thank Charlene for speaking. You did a wonderful job, and I agree with you. I would, you know, it'd be great to see more citizens here, you know, and thank you for coming to see us every once in a while. I always appreciate what you have to say. Thank you. And that's it.
I just want to echo Matt's community calendar item for the Black History Month contest at the schools. BCR has really worked hard with staff and volunteers to restructure that program to the audio and video essay contests this year. Our students are moving with technology way faster than we understand. So audio and video essay contests submissions due next Wednesday, and then council will learn of the reception for the awards winners about 10 days later. Also, I had attended the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission meeting last week, and it's always a good reminder of the projects that are happening in the region that have effects on all of us, and as we approved the PDAC priority list for transportation projects and infrastructure projects last week, and it's a good time to spend with colleagues from the other suburbs that surround the city, talking about those projects. So a real honor to be a part of that. And yeah, there's a holiday Friday planned ahead. That's all I got.
Candy or flowers?
I'm taking her out of town. I went the expensive route.
Okay, great. I don't have a great deal to report tonight. I would like to echo the sentiments. Thanks for coming, Charlene. It's good to see someone here. And I think it's a time, there's a lot of fear and concern and pain, and some optimism out there, but I think however you look at this, that this is a time that we all should be praying for our country, because I think it's, we're at a turning point. Where we're going to turn to, no one knows yet, but thanks for reminding us of that. I would like to just comment a little bit more about the Athletic Hall of Fame. I did get to go out there and introduce them all on court at halftime of the basketball game, and a wonderful group of people who care a lot about our community, and I just want to shout out congratulations to all of them for being honored. I should have a list of their names here. I forgot to get it, but you know who you are, and those of you who were at the ceremony know who you are. I think that's about all I have to say. A reminder once again, make sure your children, grandchildren, and neighbors get to school every single day. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be on the 25th of February, and thanks for being here tonight.